Good morning. Welcome to the Gold Room. My name's Paul Edwards. I'm Deputy Chief of Staff for Governor Gary Herbert, and we're grateful that you could all join us on rather short notice for a discussion about the consensus recommendations for the Utah Inland Port that Governor Herbert, legislative leaders, and members of the Salt Lake City Council have come to. We'll also talk about some other issues related to a potential special session, and I'll let the Governor answer that. You'll hear today first from Governor Gary Herbert, then from Senate President Wayne Niederhauser. He'll be followed by Speaker Greg Hughes, and then Salt Lake City Council Chair Erin Mendenhall will wrap up with those formal remarks. We do hope that we'll then have time to answer your questions. So, without any further ado, let's welcome Governor Gary Herbert.
Still coming in. Well, thank you. Welcome, everybody. We're honored to have you here today. As you know, we've been contemplating the need to have a special session. It's kind of a normal course of events when we have a general session where we pass over 500 bills. We find that sometimes there's a need to come back and make some technical corrections, some adjustments. Sometimes we have unintended consequences that you'll hear the legislature talk about. And so, we will, in fact, I've just issued a call. I've given copies to the President and the Speaker of issuing a call for this Wednesday of a special session. Copies of that should be given out and made available to any who wants to have that, particularly the press here. I think there are 11 items on the call. A lot have to do with tax policy. Again, as you know, we had a tax reform that came out of Washington, D.C., which created some unintended consequences for us here in Utah, which we need to adjust so we don't have some tax increases that were not intended here for our taxpayers here in the state of Utah. Some issues of that need to be addressed. Some other technical corrections that we have on bills, some Senate confirmations as we make appointments to different commissions and councils that the Senate needs to confirm. So, those will be going forward here, and again, just kind of a typical, but you can review those. Of major import, though, is the discussion we've had since the legislative session ended regarding the Utah Inland Port Authority Board. And the issues there that Salt Lake City has raised, we've had an attempt to find compromise and see if we can't find a way to resolve those issues. We worked with the mayor for a couple of months. We thought we had that put together for a special session two months ago. That did not happen, as we lacked support from the mayor. We then were surprised to have a reach-out from the city council, and Chairman Erin Mendenhall sent a letter to us saying we'd like to have an opportunity to continue that discussion. Not only did I receive a letter and a request from the chairman, but also the legislature, the Speaker of the House, and the Senate President, which allowed us to re-engage in this issue. It's an important issue just by history. I see you have Derek Miller here, part of our World Trade Center, now the President of the Salt Lake Chamber of Commerce. But three years ago, at one of our World Trade Center summits, we in fact talked about the important opportunity we have to have an inland port, for the economic benefit it gives to our state with increased manufacturing, and opportunities for us in fact to continue to grow our international export and import business, which was really leading the nation as we have opportunity. And the phrase we've used is not only are we the crossroads of the West, but we can become a crossroads to the world here in the state of Utah. So, that significant issue again has been introduced, and it actually goes back, predates, I think, back to the Norm Bangater Day. But we've renewed that here three years ago, and have worked hard to try to get everybody on board. I think the benefits are obvious as far as what we have, with in fact some concerns and constraints which Salt Lake City has raised. So, with that, we've had the opportunity, I think, to come together. We've had a working group working, representing the stakeholders of the state, and certainly of Salt Lake City. And I'm pleased to announce that we have now some consensus that's been reached on a potential modification of current statute referred to as Senate Bill 234, and the consensus with my office, the Governor's office, with legislative leadership in the House, Senate, and the Salt Lake City Council, and a package of amendments to address these issues. And so, I'm specifically adding that to the call, and it'll be addressing such issues as the boundaries and redefining the boundaries and refining what needs to be done, also excluding the wetlands areas out there for environmental reasons. Sharing of the property tax differential, that's the tax increment and how that will be distributed to the different taxing entities, and come to an agreement on that. Conflict of interest provisions will be adjusted specifically when it has reference to the Salt Lake City Council position, which is mandated in the legislation, and how that will be addressed. That's part of the call. And also, as part of our appeals process, our land use, sometimes referred to as LUDMA, and how that process dovetails with an appeal to the Utah Port Authority that we have again built some consensus on. So, these set of recommendations, I think, will bring us together in what I consider a kind of a win-win mutually beneficial approach on this very significantly important issue. I appreciate the work of the city council in stepping forward and helping us with that, and I appreciate the willingness of the legislature to sit and look at compromise positions with an open mind and a willing attitude of let's solve the problem. And that really has been the key for us, I think, in this, what I think's been a very successful the last four or five weeks of working together, is this attitude of let's find solutions and work together. So, with that, we'll hear first from President Wayne Niederhauser, after that from Speaker Greg Hughes, after that from Chairwoman of the Salt Lake City Council Erin Mendenhall, and we'll go to that point in the program. President?
Thank you, Governor. The Governor touched on the purpose of the inland port, and I'll just go into a little more depth. This is a state and city partnership to process imports and exports here in Utah, in Salt Lake City and the surrounding areas specifically, instead of at the ocean port. This will end closer to the distribution of a lot of those goods. As mentioned by the Governor, we are the wagon wheel of the West. We are right in the center of the all distribution, I-80 and I-15, all the rail. We are at the very center of all that, and are the, and thus, we are probably the most efficient place to distribute a lot of goods that would come in an export or import type of way. So, that would be processed here, including customs and so forth. So, we're excited about the prospects of that. I think it will be important to us. We're already a distribution center, and this will, and the important point here is this includes not only imports but exports, and that will enhance our ability here in manufacturing and also in distribution. But there are some also, some other important issues we're going to address in the special session, and many of those are going to be tax issues. There's a couple of issues that we did not address during the session. We ran out of time on at least one of those issues. We want to make sure that the results of our changes that result from the federal reform are given enough time. We don't want our taxpayers being caught off-guard. They need some time, six months now in this tax year that remains. They need some clarifications on some issues. And also, with the Wayfair case, the South Dakota case, before the Supreme Court and collection of online sales tax, we're going to address a couple of issues there to bring ourselves in conformity with that ruling by the Supreme Court. So, that's, the Senate is very supportive of this. I applaud Senator Jerry Stevenson and Senator Greg Buxton for their work on the inland port, and we look forward to correcting some of these things and making it better for not only the inland port, but for tax purposes and a couple of other minor issues. Thank you. Mr. Speaker?
Thank you, President. Thank you, Governor. Thank you to the council. And I'll tell you this, unsung heroes, the staffs, the respective staffs of our legislative branch, our executive branch, the city council staff. I know that family vacations and summer vacations were postponed, canceled, as we have taken on a pretty fast pace, and we have worked very hard together. I said, as the Governor described, we had the mayor and the Governor discussing issues that could be considered in a special session, and unfortunately, we didn't see that come to fruition. So, when we, when the city council did step forward, and with the unanimous letter offered to and was willing to discuss in the issue of the inland port, the legislation we passed, and some of the clarifications they were seeking, it was, it was welcome news. And I said at the beginning of this that, did I think that on a substance level, was this absolutely essential? My answer was no, but I thought that having us come together and having understanding and collectively working together was better for the inland port project, and I think a good signal that stakeholders are working together. I've changed that stance. I actually believe that through the candor and direct conversations that we had, where are you? Erin? Tell you. I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot about the specific issues that the city had. The theme of this special session, if, as I describe it to colleagues, is cleanups and clarifications. I don't believe you'll see any new policy that we'll be discussing in our interim committees where we discuss the bills, and then ultimately on our respective floors of our chambers. You're seeing cleanups. You're seeing clarifications, and you're not seeing it just in the issue of the inland port. This is something that in a 31, 33-day, I can't remember which it is, work day schedule of a 45 calendar day session, you find this to be the case, that there's unintended consequences, there are clarifications that are needed. What you see in the inland port bill specifically is better clarification, things that I think many of us believed and knew that the inland port board would begin to implement quickly and would begin to consider. But I think that putting it in statute and having this clarification in the bill is better than not having it in a bill. So, there was a term that I heard after the session was ended and the bill had become law, that certain aspects of this discussion were non-starters. My message back was, we've started. We have a board. They were going to meet. I think what you have here today is specificity, and it is a detail that I think is important for our stakeholders and taxing entities to understand and know that this is the intention. So, I think you have an incredibly good bill that brings, I think, more clarity to the mission of the inland port. And I think you'll find that our, that our priorities and our interests overlap greatly. And so, that's why I'm excited, and I, and as I've said, I think there is great substance in how we have described this and how the way forward looks. I will say that this isn't the end of the road. This isn't the end of the discussion with an inland port and the necessary tweaks, changes, clarifications that will come on a project of this size as people continue to dialogue, as people continue to work and ask good questions, and we see this project move forward. So, there should be no expectation that this is the last word on the legislation that involves creating this inland port project. This is creating great clarity, but there is a continued discussion that will go on. And for those that are calling for more dialogue and more conversation, I think it's inherent with a project like this. So, again, I want to thank our staffs. I want to thank our elected officials, our public servants, who took extraordinary amounts of time to be willing to speak frankly with one another. I know I say it too much, Governor, you tease me, but we are not going to let perfect be the enemy of good. I think we have struck on a, an important balance, and I think this bill is the product of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker, Governor, President Niederhauser. The city council really appreciates the willingness of Governor Herbert, Speaker Hughes, President Niederhauser, and their leadership to come to the table with the city over this incredibly critical issue. We also want to thank Senator Stevenson, the original bill sponsor, who has worked tirelessly. Thank you, Senator. And we have open, we have welcomed with open arms this invitation to sit at the table with our state leadership in the interest of our city residents and our taxpayers. This is a key opportunity that we recognize to address remaining concerns and opportunities in a project that was clearly moving rapidly and already taking shape, whether or not the city was at the table. It's critical for our residents that their leaders are here and negotiating our concerns. So, our council never gave up on our desire to contribute to the port's success. We know that we can't effectively represent our city residents' concerns if we aren't at that table, if we're on the outside looking in. And we also didn't lose sight of the issues and questions raised by bold members of our community, who by their persistence actually are incorporated, I believe, into the draft of this bill. So, change isn't going to happen unless we actively engage with those who can make it happen. Thank you. I believe change is necessary on this bill. I want to reiterate some of the basic realities of SB 234, fourth substitute, that passed at the end of the session, that included 100% tax increment sweepability, with $0 set aside for affordable housing, and zero assurance for municipalities providing core municipal services, public services, police, fire, et cetera. Zero assurance we'd be paid for those services. No clear environmental planning, reporting, monitoring, or direct accountability to the port authority. And there are many other areas of concern that this city council has consistently raised. We've been able to address our consistent concerns in this draft bill to a great extent. And I want to go through a few of these substantive changes that you'll see in the draft bill achieved through the negotiations. There is a 10% set aside of tax increment dollars for affordable housing. This is remarkable, and I, I can only speculate the amount of money that this will produce, but in terms of our collective approach, state and city, to address meaningfully homelessness in the state of Utah, this 10% for affordable housing is significant in and of its own. There's a process now in this draft bill that assures in statute that Salt Lake City, West Valley City, Magna Municipalities will be paid for their municipal services that are rendered within the port, including fire, police, public services, public utilities. The draft bill preserves tax and land use processes that are key to our taxpayers and the success of our city, and gets to those LUDMA concerns we've been talking about since January. It clarifies that the authority is an appeals board of last resort, and there's many details that we can get into later on that. It aligns with LUDMA-defined terms rather than making its own new definitions. It increases transparency, including public process notices and specific to appeals opportunities for the public to make comment. There's a 2% cap on the property tax differential to be used for authorities' operating expenses. It allows the board, the Port Authority Board, to appoint non-voting members in advisory councils, including individuals from taxing entities, community organizations, and other associations. It removes already developed areas from the boundary, and as the Governor mentioned, 4,000 acres of wetland. And then there's the environmental components. There's inclusion in the bill to bring DEQ, we have Alan Matheson from the Department of Environmental Quality with us today, and DEQ will be brought into the sustainability policy and planning process, which will be a part of the business plan creation for the port. That business plan will tie best practices and federal, state and federal standard alignment, monitoring and emissions reporting, and strategies that utilize the best available technology systems to mitigate environmental impacts, and others. I could go on. There's a lot of changes to this bill that the city's four consistent points have been addressed through, but we'll have time to do that afterward. The council members, I need to say, are very aware of many residents and interest groups that have significant concerns that still need to be addressed. We get to now look forward to, and in the years to come, working with Salt Lake City legislators, stakeholders, and the community as the inland port grows from a concept to the biggest economic driver in the state of Utah. The special session is a chance to see the fruits of this collaboration and the shared goals we have to balance the needs of all of us who wish to succeed. Upon this progress, we can continue to work together as the capital city in the state, and I believe we've turned a new leaf in the process we've gone through. I want to thank again our Governor, Speaker Hughes, President Niederhauser, Senator Stevenson, and my peers who have unanimously and actively supported this process, James Rogers, Andrew Johnston, Chris Wharton, who's out of the country, Derek Kitchens here, Amy Fowler, thank you for being here, and Councilmember Charlie Luke, and especially again, our staff for working hand-in-glove with us and with the state staff to get this process done. Thank you.
Well, thanks to everybody. Again, as you can probably appreciate, this is not an easy issue, and it's been a lot of hard work by many people coming together with an attitude of let's find the solution, which has brought us to this point here, which, as the Speaker said, is not necessarily the end. This is part of the journey. And I appreciate the fact that we've had people willing to come together with open minds and say, what can we do to make it better and improved? I received a letter this morning from the Utah City League of Cities and Towns, and they've endorsed this process and support what we're doing in a special session. So, that's good to have the League on board with this issue now, too. And I would like to also just amplify what Chairman Mendenhall said. This is kind of a new beginning. The inland port is a big deal. It's a great opportunity for our state to have increased opportunity for economic expansion in appropriate ways that helps the rising generation and our children, our grandchildren to have jobs. And it's pretty hard to have a good quality of life if you don't have a healthy economy. That's why we focused so much on this aspect over the last number of years, and to the point we have a very healthy, diverse economy. Still have some challenges in rural Utah, but this will even help in our outlying areas with this inland port opportunity. So, this is really a significantly big issue, and we cannot probably overstate its importance. But we have one chance to do this, and we want to make sure we do it right. But maybe the more important issue for me, as I've discovered in this process over these last basically 30 days, as the Chairman has said, this is a new opportunity for us to have better relations between our capital city, Salt Lake City and who they represent, and the state of Utah. This is a new era of collaboration, cooperation, which is past due, and I think that's the thing that makes me as excited as anything. I think we're resolving the differences on the inland port, but the opportunity for the state and Salt Lake City to work together in a more collaborative fashion is what we see on exhibit here today. And that really is an intended consequence, which is maybe one of the great outcomes of this effort. So, with that, we thank everybody. It's been mentioned from the staff to the elected officials, everybody who had a stake in this and wanted to give input. We still have more work to do, but we'll look forward to having the first discussions here. I know there'll be committee hearing Wednesday in our special session, so the public will be invited to come in and participate and comment. Who knows? There might be some tweaks here and some things that we'll do in the general session come up in 2019. But this will be a journey that we will go on together to make sure we have the right outcomes for the people of this great state. So, with that, Paul will turn the time back to you for any Q and A.
Thank you, Governor. Ben?
One of the criticisms leveled against this bill was that it was pushed through in the last phase of the legislative session, and it looks like they're pushing it through on a special session with a committee hearing Wednesday, a vote Wednesday afternoon. Doesn't that have any response to that? Are you moving too quickly yet again?
Speaker?
I love answering Ben's questions. So, I think that we had, we had spent most, all the session discussing and deliberating over the inland port. You had members of leadership, myself, our House Majority Whip Frances Gibson, Jerry, the Appropriations Chair of the Senate, going down during the session to meet with the city, the city council. I don't think you'll find another occasion during a session where that collaboration is going on. We also went and attended a town hall meeting or a neighborhood meeting at the state fairgrounds. I think some of our experiences, certainly our experiences from those, those overtures and those discussions, found their way in this bill. I think one of the reasons it was important to have Council District 1 at the table was from the voices that we heard at the fairground. The reality is that the House received that bill on day 43 in the evening, and that does not give inherently a lot of time for the House to have its work done. But that's not unique to that bill. There's a lot of bills that are arriving on that day, on that respective day. But to say it was rushed, I think there was an incredibly, there was a deliberate, and I think measurable, effort by, I think, all parties to work as much as we could together. And the examples I give don't even come close to describing the other meetings that occurred during that time. What this was, I think that there was a commitment or a hope that even earlier than this, that we would have a special session, and I think there was uniformity in this that would bring greater clarity. I would argue it's taken us a little longer than some had hoped. I think that was a May special session that we were looking at potentially. Here we are in July. So, I think that those discussions have been, have been good. I think they've been more collaborative than the initial ones right after the session, and so, I'm happy that we're looking at it. And I'll tell you, if you look at the call, you'll find that this bill will probably has more of that discussion than some of the cleanup, other issues on tax bills and those things that we do need to work on, and has had good deliberation, but I would argue that the inland port issue has eclipsed that, that process.
So, how much is the public going to be able to weigh in on this? Because you haven't, you know, the bill hasn't even seen draft language yet, but you have a committee hearing Wednesday and a vote Wednesday afternoon.
There'll be, there'll be the public hearing. I mean, it's, it's not untypical, Ben, of the bills that we have that get approved and come before a committee and go to the floor during a session. So, I, the, the public will have its opportunity to speak to the bill, review it. Our open meetings require notice, appropriate notice, so people understand when that will be discussed, and there will be a public hearing portion.
Other from media? Katie?
I know, but you mentioned that there are social concerns. What are some concerns that you guys didn't quite get there, uncompromising, or are you hoping that they'll might be addressed in the future?
Good question, Katie, but I think that the bulk of our concerns from the boundaries, land use, tax increment, and the board makeup have largely been addressed. Certainly, there's tweaks and revisions to come, and I think as the port develops and the board is impaneled and their work begins, the business plan's created, the sustainability plan is created, that we'll find new additions to come back to the table of conversation with our state leadership. But for the most part, I think we've, we've assuaged the city's concerns a great deal.
Have you seen the mayor at all, or has she been working with you?
I have not.
Yeah, Ben, again?
Do you, the mayor is not here. The mayor has not been involved in the thinking of creating this round. Do you even need her at this point?
Say that again?
Do you need the mayor at all at this point?
We want the mayor. It's not a matter of needing the mayor. It's a matter of we want to have a collaborative effort by all parties that have something to say, kind of in line with what you'd said before, Ben. This is a republic. We have people here who've been elected by the people to represent their views and their concerns, and they're bringing that all together to come up with good policy. And that's been a long-time effort. We mentioned earlier that we've been talking about this for three years. The business committee at large has been saying, come on, let's get something done. And these folks have moved in that direction. We've extended, I negotiated with the mayor for a couple of months, thought that we had everything in agreement for a special session. It fell through, unfortunately. I appreciate the fact that the council stepped up and said, let's not drop this opportunity. And we've extended ourselves and the Governor's Office invitations for the mayor to participate. She's declined to do so. I know that the city council's extended on two or three different occasions requests to come and participate. If you can't come personally, send a designee. That's been declined for whatever reason. But it's not a matter of do we need the mayor? We want the mayor. We want to have all of us together around the table as we work through this process, as I mentioned, a journey that requires everybody. And again, we may not agree on everything. That's probably just normal and natural, but we would like to have everybody to have an opportunity to give input and understand concerns and see if we can't resolve differences. concerns and see if we can't resolve differences and work in a collaborative effort together.
Taylor?
Governor, is there any concern that a trade war, the feasibility of projects?
A trade war?
Yeah, tariffs.
Yeah, I met with the President and the Vice President here about three weeks ago. We've had discussions about tariffs. I resurrected the discussion of Smoot-Hawley from way back in 1930 when they put tariffs on, which led us into the Great Depression. So we've lived through bad policy in the past. I think the states are in a little different position than is the current administration when it comes to tariffs and international trade. The tariffs, I don't think, are helping us. In fact, they may hurt us. We'll see what that leads to. But as I've met, I was invited to speak to a number of companies and businesses when I was there in Washington, D.C. about our international trade business. I was invited the last day to a lunch to speak to 20-plus international businesses like Sony, Samsung, Kia, and other major companies that are doing business in America. And I wanted to know about Utah's international trade and our philosophy and attitude. And said by the way, tell us about your --
Your question. I don't think that was intentional.
Anyway, they wanted to know, they've heard, it's on the radar screen of an inland port. I think that's an advantage to them, to do business with America. Certainly, they have to wait to bring the goods in, which is going to be about the area in a less costly, more convenient way, and certainly for us to bring manufacturing to connect export businesses. I think you'll find over the next couple of years, some remarkable opportunities for us because of the inland port. The fact that the world is hearing about it on their radar screen, I think sends a message that we're on the right path. We're doing something that really is, I think, an opportunity, an opportunity for this state.
That will conclude this portion of our presentation.